Good evening and welcome to the March 24, 2015 Meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Philbeck. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television audience, I'd like to present to you your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right.
Good evening. Mickey Price, South Point Township.
Good evening. Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
Good evening. Joe Carpenter, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Good evening. Tom Keeger, Gastonia Township.
Thank you, gentlemen. I call this meeting to order. Our invocation will be led by Commissioner Carpenter and Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Williams. Please stand.
Do you want me in prayer, please? Father God, we turn to you in times of need, but we turn also in times of blessings. And we've been truly blessed in Gaston County with a lot of great people who's given leadership, and we ask you bless upon them as they continue. We pray for this board and its decisions that will be in keeping with your will. Now, Father, as we think about this world today and the many challenges and the problems it faces, we pray that you will send your Holy Spirit to those folks that need your loving care. And we ask you then, in the name of your son and not my Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now, our first item is a zoning public hearing. The Commission will take citizen comment on the following issues: one zoning map change and one road renaming. Before we go into public hearing, let me outline the rules of procedure for the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the Chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Questions shall be directed to the Chair for a response, and the Chair shall rule on all points of order during the hearing. At this time, do I have a motion to go in public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? We are now in public hearing. Our first item is a zoning map change. The Commission will take comment on zoning map change, Z-1503. The applicant is, I think it's Eli Benfield, Speedwell Machine Works Incorporated. I'll ask Mr. Willie King, Community Development Planner III, for comments. Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board and Planning Board. Thank you for the background on the subject application, which, as you've already indicated, is Z-15-03. Again, as you indicated, Speedwell Machine Works Incorporated and represented by Mr. Eli Benfield is here to request a rezoning of the subject property. Ownership is Mr. and Mrs. Amos Benfield. Again, one parcel is under consideration. Property identification number 147489, located on Ferguson Ridge Road, and the request is from the R1 Single Family Limited Zoning District to the C1 Light Commercial Zoning District. The subject area contains approximately 1.43 acres. Currently on the property is a single-family building. Mr. Chair, I'd like to refer to our new Elmo to orient everyone as to where the property is.
Now, Willie, is that actually an Elmo?
In an email I saw today, it was referred to as the new Elmo. I'm not sure what the new...
Will we have a ceremony for the other Elmo?
It's possible.
How many years did we have that?
At least 15 that I'm aware of.
Wow.
At least 15.
And I think Joe was here before the Elmo.
Wow.
Okay, thank you, Willie.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I've placed on our new technology, looking clockwise with the pointer. You see the street network. Again, Ferguson here, Crowder's Creek. You see the zoning. The subject property is located in the blue-bounded lot, and again, you see surrounding parcels. Again, C1 is where Speedwell is currently located, as well as the residential zoning, R1 and R2. Moving down, the property is located in your southwestern jurisdiction of the county. The red dot, you see 321 South. Moving over, you see an aerial. Again, the subject property is bounded in blue. You see the existing land uses on the ground. Moving back up, again, the lot with the hatching pattern is the subject property under your consideration. Again, you see the surrounding zoning, as well as the existing street network. Mr. Chair, the property, as I said, is located in a southwest small area. As to a statement of consistency, with consideration of the comp plan goals and objectives, it is the opinion of staff, the proposed map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. As to municipal coordination, no coordination was required. And, Mr. Chair, there were several calls made about the proposed application, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Are there any citizens wishing to comment at this time? If you would, please state your name and address when you come to the podium, please.
Excuse Doverhalls, but my name's Benny Lunsford. I live at Ferguson Ridge Road, 1254. I've known Mr. Benfield, his son, and all, and we're best of friends. As far as I know, we don't have no, ain't no Hatfields and McCoys, okay? And we're, I just oppose, I'm opposing it because I got grandkids. It's a residential area, okay? And I think a commercial site, any larger than what it is, would be not beneficial to us, okay? And I've got some pictures here. I'd like to...
You can give them to our clerk. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion made by Commissioner Keeger, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Items are accepted.
I have a, is it okay to speak?
Yes.
Okay, I have a couple people that live behind in Foxfire that is not, was not available to be here because of Mr. Cunningham. His wife is bedridden. She's paralyzed. And, excuse me, but Mr. Pauls, he's a detective up here for Gaston County. He's not available to be here because he's had a meeting or something, some kind of benefit, you know, something going on. He wasn't able to be here. And Mr. Stormburg, he said he was going to try to be here, but if he didn't, I got a petition signed, their signatures, and...
Just give it to the clerk. That'll be included in the first motion.
Okay. And I've got Mr. Pauls. Mr. Paul, he would like for me to give, to ask if the council would take these papers that he's going to, he want me to give them to each one of y'all, if it'd be okay, to look at and read over right quick, if you got the time. He's not, he wasn't available to be here, if it's okay.
Chuck, is it okay if all that's included in the same motion? Thank you.
Okay. But as far as, is, I'm sorry. No, no. I got shot.
Mr. Lunsford, do you have copies of this for the Planning Board as well? Do they need to look at any of this when they go back?
There was, yeah.
Commissioner Price, when you finish, if we can give those...
I'm sorry.
...to Mr. Bailey?
These, these.
When they get ready to leave?
Yeah, that's all the pictures I got, yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Any other concerns?
No, this, this, you know, the nuisance, the people working at night, late at night, 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, you know, we, it's hectic to us, you know, and my wife works first shift, just unloading trucks and stuff at night, just one thing right after the other, you know, grinding parts at night outside. But there's a, that's about all I got, you know, that...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lunsford. Is there any other citizens wishing to make comment? Please state your name and address for the record.
John Lunsford, 1244 Ferguson Ridge Road. First of all, it's noisy, six to seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Traffic's terrible. Most of the time, trucks entering and exiting the shop. Runoff of fluids into my property, and I'm sure if it's expanded, it's going to be twice or three times the worst that it is now. And it really, it's not designed for industrial business out there. I'd love to just keep it residential. And that's it.
Any other citizens? Comment? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Ernest Param, and I live at 1210 Ferguson Ridge Road. That's where I grew up. I live next to this, and it is very noisy. There's a lot of chemicals running down the road, and as I come by there today, there was a grinding noise going on, trucks going in and out of there all the time, sometimes when I come home from work in the afternoon. You can't even get, I can't even get to my house because they've got the road blocked and stuff, and there's just, this thing is, we're residential. This is, this is where our families grew up. This doesn't need to be any bigger than what it is right there. It's just, doesn't belong there. There's a lot of houses there, and that's all I have to say. There's a lot of chemicals running down the road already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Param. Are there any other citizens wishing to make comment? If you want to make comment, please go ahead and come forward and just stand in line. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Stromberg. I live at 126 Foxfire Run.
You say Michael?
Mark.
Mark.
M-A-R-K.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I live behind the property that's being annexed onto Speedwell right now. I've lived there for a little over 20 years. Speedwell was there when I moved there. It's a small machine shop, and never really been a big problem, but recently, they've been adding employees, they've added a parking lot, there's a lot more traffic in there, and the entire surroundings are residential, other than them. And I can see my property value dropping when they put this addition onto their facility, and I don't know, if things go as Speedwell would like them to go. I'm sure that they're going to want to expand again. There's another parcel adjacent to that that's probably 15 or 20 acres, and I could see them wanting to take that property at some point, too. I'm just into my 60s now. I think about retiring, and I was hoping that I could retire there, but if this were to come to pass, I may be forced to continue to living there because I won't be able to sell my property because the values are going to drop on it, so... Anyhow, I really believe this is a residential-type environment, and we really don't need this industrial-type commercial property. And this is industrial. This is not family, you know, multifamily dwellings or storefront or anything like that. This is true industrial work. They're actually creating waste, and they're causing problems with the environment in the area, too, so... I'd just like to consider that there are families living in this area, that we really don't need all this industry right there at that particular place. There should be other places they could expand. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to make comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since we are in the public hearing phase, as to the photographs that one of the neighbors has presented to you, all of those comments and questions need to be discussed now rather than in the Planning Board. So could we get maybe two of those photos back that I could put on the Elmo that everyone could see? Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Willie, does the...
Yes, sir.
Does the applicant have any comments?
It's good, I'm not certain, Mr. Chair. Yeah, here.
My name is Eli Benfield, representing Speedwell Machine Works there at 1301 Crowder's Creek Road. I want to thank everyone tonight for the opportunity to come and speak. We have been in business since 1974. We have been at the location there on Ferguson Ridge Road since 1978, there prior to, you know, the development of Foxfire, the development of any other properties or residential properties around it. And first of all, I want to thank the neighbors for coming. I want to thank Bobby and Benny. I appreciate what you said, and I agree. I consider you both wonderful friends, and Benny does a lot for us, and he keeps an eye on the place, and we appreciate that. He's been a, both have been a wonderful neighbor, and we've done business together, and again, I want to thank them for that. But we are, have been blessed to grow. We're continuing to grow. We currently, with the facilities we have now, it's hard to contain it. We operate out of three different facilities, two which are in Gastonia, one of which is in Clover, South Carolina, which we currently are leasing with the purchase to buy, and we hope to continue to grow. We hope to continue to add more jobs, and with that growth, there are some things that arise that are concerned, and I agree with everything everyone has said here. And our main objective, we want to be a good neighbor to everyone. I, myself personally, my family, we are neighbors. We're speaking as neighbors. We live a stone's throw away. I do not want to see the property value go down. We want to do everything possible to see that improve. And with every comment that was made, these are things that we want to take care of, that this is one of the reasons we are doing this, that we are pursuing this avenue of rezoning so we can address each one of these issues with the traffic. We know that it's a concern with new layout, new design. We want to make sure we're looking for staging trucks to keep the road free and clear. For the noise, you know, with the growth, we're, our priority is keeping customers happy, but our number one priority, we want to keep those around us happy. And with the growth, we're looking to put everything in-house, under one roof, where we can keep all of our operations inside, where we are not a concern and no noise issues to the neighbors. As far as waste and liquid disposal, those are things, too, concerns that we, this is why we're doing this, to address those concerns. The way to address that is to grow and to continue to expand, and we have those things in the plans to do those things. Again, our, speaking as a neighbor, I agree with everyone here, and we want to do whatever we can to make sure we continue going forward as a pleasant neighbor, because we want to stay in business for another 40 years in Gaston County, and we want to do, take the necessary steps in order to continue successfully as well to be a good neighbor to these folks. So, thank you.
Thank you. I ask any citizens wishing... Excuse me, last opportunity. Any citizens wishing to make comment? Okay. Any questions from the Planning Board? Any questions from the Commission? Commissioner Price?
Thank you. Mr. Benfield, you made some comments about you were in agreement with the, what the neighbors spoke of. The pictures they presented don't paint a pretty good picture of your place. If I would have been you, I would have tried to clean the place up and got my neighbors on my side rather than against me at this point, but are you inspected at all by any government agency for groundwater contamination or any, any, any kind of hazard material inspection?
If you're going to speak, please come to the podium. Please state your name, please.
My name is Randy Benfield, and again, we thank you for the opportunity to address you. We are inspected, and I have personally, over the years, contacted Raleigh and had them come out and take ground samples to see if there was any contamination or any chemicals that have been mentioned here that would be adverse to the neighborhood. We were found within compliance. We do try to handle consciously and respectfully all chemicals. The chemicals that we do use are solvents that are biodegradable. I have, again, contacted Raleigh and said, "Please instruct us the proper way that you wish for us to dispose of these," and they did make it aware that we were doing exactly what we should do. We have a firm that comes out and carries it off to their site, and we had difficulty doing this because it was not biohazardous material. It is considered biodegradable, which is mixed as well with the ecology and the environment. And they said, you know, "If it were biodegradable, we'd have a better opportunity to dispose of it differently." So they said, "We will take it, but we're going to dispose of it just as you would dispose of it because of the fact that the chemicals are biodegradable." And the manufacturers, we keep MDI sheets on every chemical that we use on-site, containing the elements that are contained in the chemicals, and we are, we are neighbors ourselves. We are concerned about the groundwater issues. We drink the same water. We live in the same neighborhood as Eli mentioned. We're within a throwing store of this very area, so we don't want to do anything detrimental to the area there. If we did, we would be doing our stuff a disservice as far as the property values are concerned. We have property there. We don't want to do anything that would, again, hurt our property values. That would be shooting our stuff in the foot, if you will. So our intentions are to make the place a better place. We want to address these issues that our neighbors and friends have addressed. We're very cognizant of it. We know that there's some issues, and we want to address them, and we feel like that this is the best way to do that, is allow us to get the trucks off the road, allow us to put the things that are making noise inside the walls. We are, we want to be a very obliging neighbor and do all that we can to make it a benefit to the county and to our neighbors.
Did you see the pictures?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay, would you take just a moment, look at them? Because if your other locations look like this location, you guys are what I would consider close to being a junkyard.
Okay, I can address these pictures that you have here, the water running down the road, the street, is that the ones you're referring to?
No, there's more. You got a ground runoff? You got trash laying around everywhere?
The ground runoff is, the way the property is situated, the Foxfire subdivision is about 10 feet above grade level to where we are. All of the water, the rain, runs down to us. We've created a ditch down through there and putting culverts to accommodate this runoff. We've even had the neighbors in Foxfire run their black hoses under the fence down into our ditch because the water's got to go somewhere, and they don't have a way of addressing it, so they run it down on us. And, you know, we've tried to be, again, an accommodating neighbor. We've not complained about that, but these pictures that you see, that where the road is wet, that is rainwater that runs down. It's just runoff from rainwater. There are no chemicals in that. The other, I guess I'm looking, there's four pictures here. Is that the ones you're referring to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this a year-round picture, or is this just something they took pictures of that just happens to look like this today they took pictures? Or is this what it looks like year-round?
That's year-round.
That's pitiful.
Well, we would welcome the opportunity, you know, for a physical inspection to, you know, if people would like to come and address that.
You say you were concerned, and you don't want your property values to go down. If you clean the junk up, property value may not go down.
There's a few, there are a few more. Enter for the record. I speak to, there's one more. You look at the screen. Okay, all right, thank you. All right. This is a picture of the ditch, which I personally, Sunday evening, went out and cleaned that up because from time to time, it does runoff, things washes into that ditch. It's a catch area, and I did, if you were to take a picture today, you would certainly not see that.
Well, have you done any kind of improvement to keep chemicals from getting on the ground?
There are no chemicals that are getting on the ground. This is, this is water. There are not chemicals on the ground. We've had this inspected, as I previously mentioned, had come out and done an examination of the soil test.
I'm through, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Keeger.
Thank you. I have a question.
Okay, all right.
Willie, I do.
Yes, sir.
The, the business is in the first two lots at that intersection of Ferguson and Crowder's Creek, correct?
That is correct. That is correct, Commissioner.
And then you've got a residential site.
That's correct.
Is, if I'm reading the information correctly, the planned site also has a dwelling on it?
That's correct. Currently, there's a home on the subject property that you're considering for rezoning.
And I understand, I know that area. I'm very familiar with it for, I don't know, putting out campaign signs, I think, over the years. But it does funnel down, and I can understand the debris, people out in the rural area throwing things out, and it winds up down in the catch basin. But I guess what concerns me is, in an area that is primarily residential and zoned for such, to sort of hopscotch over one home and in between another, is this something, Willie, that, can you recall us doing anything in recent years similar to this, you know, with the houses in between?
Not offhand. It is considered, what you would consider, an expansion of the existing C1 zoning district. And the subject property is within proximity of the C1 as well as the Speedway operation.
Amos Benfield?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're in Lot 3. Do you reside there?
I reside on 150 Griston Road, which is around the, at the corner of...
But you own that property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Charlie Perrin, not here tonight? How, how, does, how'd he feel about it?
He didn't like the heat. He had a worm.
But going back to what Mr. Price was alluding to, I feel comfortable that there probably is not any, any toxic waste or anything like that going on there. They, they're going to be inspected, and they have been inspected, but, and I, is that debris, is that noticeable from the road once it gets down the hill?
I really don't think so. I mean, it's, as the picture shows, it's behind, there's a mobile trailer, if you will, or a large mobile storage facility, which will also be done away with if the, if this is approved. The overall appearance of the site will be improved tremendously. That's our desire. And to answer your question, if you were looking for it, you could probably see it when, on a day that, after a gully washer, that things have washed in the ditch, then I'm sure if you were looking for it, you could see it, just as these pictures depict. But on a normal basis, if you're riding down the road, you, you would, I don't think that you would notice it.
Okay. One last question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Benfield, and I know it's going to be hard, and you may not even want to answer it, but if you were raising a family, or you had grandkids, and you lived in Lot Number 7, or 6, or 5, or 2, or 1, would you feel comfortable with an industry like this moving in?
The fact that the industry was there prior to these?
Well, no, I mean, the new location.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. This industry, as was mentioned previously, has been there since 1978. So people had the option, especially everyone in Foxfire, knowing that this was a manufacturing facility, chose to move in, knowing it was already there. So I don't think that they had...
But it's not there in the spot you're wanting to build.
No, sir. No, sir.
That's what I'm referring to.
Okay. I don't think there would be a problem. I personally would not have a problem because I have raised my family there within, you know, the same groundwater level. The, and my son and myself both live in that same neighborhood.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Okay. Thank you. I'm also very familiar with this spot. I don't go there as much as I used to. When this was a dry county, I had to go down to Bowling Green to get something to drink. But I do go down there occasionally. There was several things mentioned, and I think you've already answered the one about the runoff, there's no chemical runoff. The other concerns were the traffic, and I believe you said with the new facility, that it would, you know, you're going to, you're going to address that situation.
Yes, sir.
And, and then the noise.
Yes, sir.
Now, I think we have a screening, Willie, don't we have a screening plan?
We do, Commissioner.
Standards that they have to screen. And, and I'm just wondering, with all of that being done, is there still going to be an issue with the traffic and the noise?
No, sir. I can say that that's specifically several of the reasons that we're wanting to expand and cover these issues. The noise that's been referred to by our neighbors is a grinding, which is currently done outside because we don't have room inside to do it. And that's one of the things that we wanted to address, being able to put, put that internally. As far as the traffic situation, our plans and intentions are to move it far enough off the back of the road, off the road, so that tractor-trailers can pull completely off the road and have plenty of room between Ferguson Ridge Road and their parking location. Whereas now, there is a situation where if a tractor-trailer backs up to our loading dock, the cab is out in the road.
Yeah.
And we know that's a problem. It's a problem for us individually as well. And it's caused some situations that I'm sure our neighbors were not pleased with. And in one instance, one of the trucks ran off the road into the front side road of Mr. Bobby Lunsford down there, and we immediately called a landscaper, had him come in, corrected it. I called Bobby personally and asked him, I said, "Are you satisfied? Is this up to your standards? Are you acceptable with this?" And he agreed at the time that it was. So we're trying to address these issues, and, you know, that's part of our intent, sir.
Well, you know, I want to congratulate you on growing the business. It sounds good.
Thank you, sir.
How many employees you all have?
We have around 65.
Oh, wow.
And, yes, sir, we've been blessed.
Okay. Well, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will say, this is probably one of the longest conversations we've had on one of these issues since I've been on the board, so whatever that's worth. You know, Mr. Benfield, we're not trying to beat you up up here.
I understand.
And I appreciate you coming and answering all the questions and just being forthright about all of it. I think, you know, pretty toward on some of this, you know, as a property rights guy, you know, I appreciate you wanting to expand your business.
Yes, sir.
And like Commissioner Carpenter said, you know, it's certainly a testament to you that you guys have expanded your business and continue to grow in this economy. So my hat's off to you and your business for that. I think the only concern is similar to what Commissioner Price was saying, you know, do you understand where some of the concerns are that the residents feel? You know, when you look at those pictures, you know, it is, it did look pretty bad.
Absolutely.
And if you look at it and just take that at face value, you know, you're inclined to kind of think, if they expand, and it looks like this already, you know, what happens if the business expands? I mean, can you appreciate those concerns?
Absolutely.
And what do you, what do you think you guys have done to remedy that in the future?
Again, the layout of the proposed addition will address those issues where that, hopefully, we can have some type of irrigation that will allow the, we get all the runoff. Like I said, it's 10 feet above the ground level where we are, and it just runs right down on us. So we, too, would like to have that improved to, for our purposes as well. And I'd like to mention also that, you know, a lot of the, over the years, 40-plus years we've been there, we've been able to employ a lot of people in the neighborhood, and still do. We have a good, sizable number of people that live within a mile or two of our location. And we want, we want to improve it. That is our intention. We're not satisfied with status quo, with the unsightliness. That's, we're aware of that, that from time to time, it gets like that. And we want to improve that. So to answer your question, we, with the additions, feel like that we can greatly improve this issue.
All right. And you said you guys had an inspection from Raleigh. Who's performed that inspection?
I think it was the Department of, it's been a number of years. I can't remember who it was, but I had them come in. When I originally purchased the property, it was a country store there, and the relatives of Perrin's owned it at the time, and there was gas pumps out front. So I had them come in, dig up the tanks, test the soil to see if there was any contamination. And they found, this is right in front now, in the very front of the building, away from the road, that where people were filling their cars, the fuel spillage over the years, they found a little bit, less than a foot deep.
You're talking about, this was before you guys built and everything? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. So this hasn't been since you've been in business?
Oh, yeah. And we've had, since that time, of course, we wanted to appropriately dispose of these solubles. Here, again, they're biodegradable solubles. We wanted to be conscientious and dispose of those in a responsible manner. So I contacted Raleigh and said, "Please give us guidelines, how best to dispose of these." And again, if they stated if they were biohazardous, we would be better fit to tell you how to handle these. But they're not. They're biodegradable. Their suggesting to me was, you can pour them down the drain. And I said, "I don't want to do that." I said, "I'm conscious. We drink this water. I drink as well as the neighbor do. I don't want to do that. We want to handle it appropriately." So we started having a firm out of Charlotte come over, pump it, and they take it and dispose of it.
Well, I will say, I'll leave it with this. I think you have a very business-friendly Board of Commissioners and a planning board. We also want to make sure that the residents are protected and their property values are protected.
Sure.
So I'll be very interested to see how the planning board comes back with this. I think it'll be a lot of information they've got to take into account with this, and I appreciate you coming.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. I have a couple of questions. You said you have reports. Are these reports available?
Yes, sir. It would take some time for our office manager to locate them, but we can make those available.
Okay. I, I think it would help your neighbors to make them available.
Sure. And we'd be glad to present the MDI statements as well on the solvents that are used.
I'm assuming Environment and Natural Resources is probably the one that did that?
Yes, sir. You're correct.
Okay.
We, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you. We have had individuals from the county, officials come from the county and said, "We've had a report of a green sludge on the ground." They went and checked, went around, walked around the building, said, "We don't see anything. It must have been a disgruntled employee." So we've always opened up to that. If they find something that's hazardous, we want to be the first ones to know. So we're open to that.
Okay. I'm just reading a letter here that someone wrote, some of their issues. One is burning of pallets and other unknown items on the property.
Yes, sir. And occasionally, we do that because it's, it's an open field, and just like anyone else burning their wood, we get a burning permit, and occasionally, maybe once every three or four months, then we dispose of them accordingly. We even have neighbors come by and say, "Can I get some of the pallets off there? I want to build something. I want to use that for a bonfire." And we gladly give them to them because we want to dispose of them.
Okay. I know that's, that's one of the issues, or one of the complaints, is the burning of that material.
There, again, the proposed facility will be right where we're burning them, so that area would no longer be available to do that, if that's...
Okay. Chuck, I guess my last question's for you. Can we, can we add stipulations to this, or would that have to be a conditional use?
I cannot add stipulations to a general zoning request.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. At this time, the planning board is excused to First Appearance Courtroom, Room 2029, for deliberations. Our second item is a road, road name changes. The commission will take comment on naming a private drive, Dove Branch Drive, located off South Point Road. I'll ask Ms. Sarah Penley, GIS specialist, to provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comment, citizen comment will be taken. Ms. Penley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
And could you please call the new device by its proper name?
The new device is Izzy, or...
Izzy.
Sorry. I mispronounced it already. It's Fizzy.
Fizzy.
Fizzy has replaced the Elmo. So it does have an official name, and we'll get a resolution or something typed up to that effect later.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to present the road naming of a private drive. This is a staff-initiated, property owner petition included with 100% signatures. The property is located in the South Point Township off of South Point Road. Property owner presented to staff for a zoning permit for new construction for his property located on tax parcel 221900, located on South Point Road. Upon assignment of a new address, it was discovered that there were no addresses available for the property owner. The current scheme did not allow for an additional number, and the construction of the new home is going to be placed well off the road. Therefore, for emergency services and in accordance with our ordinance, it would be beneficial to the property owner if we named the private drive. The property owner recommended our petition to have it named Dove Branch Drive. This is a non-duplicating road name and would present no problems for emergency services should they need to respond. The planning board and the TRC reviewed the application and both approved with support for the naming of the roadway. And this concludes my presentation for the board.
At this time, are there any citizens wishing to make comment? Any comments from the commission, questions? At this time, I'll entertain, Commissioner Price will entertain a motion, excuse me, I'll entertain a motion for the planning zoning to approve naming of the private drive as Dove Branch Drive, with Mr. Price being the motion, seceded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Thank you. And thanks for introducing us to Fizzy.
Fizzy. Fizzy.
Fizzy.
Fizzy, like vizio.
Oh, okay. Fizzy. And we'll do a resolution for that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What do we call it? Lissy?
This concludes the public hearing for tonight. The board would like to thank each of you for your input. At this time, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seceded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries and is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item on the business agenda is the agenda revision or approval. Is there any commissioners wishing to revise the agenda?
Not I.
Hearing none. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is. Motion made by Commissioner Williams, seceded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, our next item is approval of the minutes. I'll take these all in one motion. Please let me state it. Regular meeting of January 27, 2015, the rescheduled meeting of February 10, 2015, the joint BOC BOE special meeting of February 17, and the special meeting of March 10, all 2015. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seceded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item is citizen recognition. We have Mr. Don Barkley. If you'd please come forward, please state your name and your address for the record, Mr. Barkley. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you just stated it for me. Don Barkley, 3101 Whitson Road in Gastonia. I'm glad you got it right.
Mr. Chairman, that was too fast. I couldn't understand it.
Could you please state it again for Mr. Keger? He's a little slow.
Yeah, I noticed that. Don Barkley, 3101 Whitson Road in Gastonia. Gentlemen, I want to talk about some of the pluses that this county has. One thing is open meetings because I came in this room back when the courthouse was being built. David Klein was chairman. I couldn't visualize what this would look like, but you have open meetings, you have a sunshine list that worked pretty good. But even the sunshine list can be used to your disadvantage. For instance, it does not take a rocket scientist to know that this room was reserved for the city council meeting on February 17. city council meeting on February 17, although they called it off because of weather, the room was reserved. So you went to the school board. I think they should have the opportunity to meet in this room, to have an open meeting. I think they would enjoy it, don't you? Now, while the county does not set curriculum for schools, one thing the county did about a month ago was to say, we do not believe in condemnation for greenways. I don't know if that applies to school sites or not, but due to the fact that you are wanting to give them $5 million, you might could influence them. Did that happen at this meeting on the 17th? I'm not talking about legal, I'm just talking about trying to influence them. Because I remember Forest View, I think the people's name was Moten, and the schools tried to explain that they were nice to the people, let the man live in his house, have a lifetime interest in it, not move him out while they threatened to condemn the property. Commissioner Price was chairman on the night we had Dr. Sattler in here, talking about the new school out on 74 West. He was standing right behind me here at the podium. I mentioned to him, I said, now, it's bad enough that you condemned the lady's property, but she is a retired school teacher from Cleveland County. Consider naming the school after her. He said, we have considered that. I guess you see why it's named now. And from personal experience, both Howland and Woodhill were acquired under threat of condemnation. Now, I don't know what kind of reputation this county wants, but you had an opportunity to improve the image of the county. So just something to think about. On page 63 of your agenda, you're going to loan the schools $5 million, not to build a school, but to plan a school. So if it costs $5 million to plan it, I don't know what it costs to build a thing. Is that going to be an interest-free loan? I don't know, does anybody know?
It's not a loan.
It's not a loan, it's a gift?
We're going to build schools, Mr. Barkley, and in order to build the schools, you have to get a plan and get engineering drawings, so that's what's...
I agree. $5 million worth of engineering plans, okay. Well, it says that when the geo bond debt is issued, the county will be reimbursed according to page 63 of your agenda.
Mr. Barkley, what we're doing is, we are paying the $5 million out of our fund balance...
Right.
And then, once the bonds are issued, that the voters approved for these items, we will pay that back.
Right. Now, these are the bonds that have already been voted on?
Yes, sir.
Right, not, in other words, you're not contemplating new bonds?
No, sir.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. On page 65, you're giving them $1,300,000 of interest and sales tax. Could anyone say for the record how many county dollars that had to go to pay off the bonds, that did not build schools, but generated cash that could go be deposited and draw interest? In other words, it seems like to me you're borrowing money at one rate, earning interest at another rate. The schools get the interest you earn, and yet you're paying interest and principal on the bonds that are issued. I guess that's what you call this new math, I don't know. Let me see. The reason I'm asking, does anybody know, or did anybody talk about that with this meeting with the county? I'm not talking about budget, I'm talking about cash flow. Sure, I thought surely somebody would know due to the fact that all this is on the consent agenda. Well, I better close.
When citizens comment, we allow you to comment. If you have questions, we'll be more than glad to answer those after citizens' comment, but it's not our practice to answer questions during citizen comment. Thank you.
Right. Well, let me close by saying, sometimes I don't appreciate the hard work and dedication of the staff and Commissioners, and I think this is one of the times. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our next item is to approve the consent agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seceded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item, excuse me, we have one item, non-consent zoning matters for public hearing. They're not back yet, we'll just go ahead and move forward and come back to that. We'll go with appointments. Commissioner Price?
Thank you. I have one reappointment to the Fire Advisory Board, Barry Joy.
I'll entertain that motion, motion made by Commissioner Price. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Carpenter? Commissioner Keeger?
I have three, I believe. Reappoint Reverend Tom Gillespie to the Housing Appeal Advisory Board, and also to the Nursing Home Committee Advisory Board. And to the Sarah Local Planning in the Law Enforcement category, Chief Don Roper, he's the chief of Mount Holly. And Donna, his phone number is 704-898-1249, and I'll give you his address after the meeting.
Second item. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Donna, what about Commissioner Fraley and Brown? Did we get ahold of them? Do they want us to make those?
Commissioner Fraley had sent an email before the appointment, so replacement...
Can you give me that name? Thank you. I'll make this for Commissioner Fraley, Sheila Almond, for Transportation Advisory Board.
Second.
Seceded by Commissioner Keeger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I have one appointment. Fire Advisory Board, Eric Hendricks.
Second.
Seceded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item is Commissioner Committee Reports. Commissioner Price?
Thank you. Have a couple. Attended the Department of Human and Health Services Board meeting. Things I'd like to share with the board is, April 10 is the scheduled day for the Time Capsule opening. I don't believe they picked a certain time yet, but that will be forthcoming, they're going to open the capsule. Also, during that meeting, we did approve our budget. The Director Dobbins has submitted his budget to our county manager and staff. I would like to point out that there was a overall increase of 2%, and that includes 1.2 million in salaries and 460,000 increase in insurance. It was included in that, and it still came out at only 2%. So I think staff is doing a pretty commendable job of holding down expenses. I know they, we talked about lapped salaries as being a part of that budget. In the social services side, we have 31 vacancies for 7% rate, and so far, lapped salaries are $835,810. On the public health side, we have 35 vacancies at 17% rate and lapped salary savings of $707,000. So as you can see, as we get at each meeting, Director Dobbins tells us that with any opening that occurs, they are reevaluating that position to see if it's needed, and if it is not necessarily needed, but the job description can be expanded into the new consolidated board. Also attended Gaston Family Health Services meeting. This was February 25. We are currently experiencing revenues over expenses of $73,000. And the other thing I'd like to bring forward is a, we're having another dental mission of mercy in September. This will probably serve, if goes as planned, over 1,000 people who don't have dental insurance and are in need of some kind of dental care. In order to have the event in a location in the county, the event organizer has to raise $39,000. And at that meeting on the 25th, they had gotten the need down to $28,000. So I told them I would put in a request for some funds from the county to see if we could participate to help this mission of mercy come to our county again. In 2013, when we had our last one, we did see over 800 patients, and we only had a total of 40 chairs that day. This time, they're bringing in 60 chairs for dentists to use, and that's why they expect to do over 1,000 patients in those two days. So just FYI. Also attended the EDC Board meeting on March 10, and was very encouraged by the interest in our county and companies locating here, and I'll let Commissioner Carpenter tell a little more about that. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, I appreciate everybody coming out to the lease signing event that we had with the hospital. It was a large success. I think everybody at the hospital had a good time, it was a good turnout, good showing. It's going to be a big deal for the hospital, a big deal for the county. So I appreciate this board coming out, doing that. Don't forget about the Community Challenge, May the 16th. So I think that'll be at Stewart Kramer High School this year, and the proceeds will benefit Gaston County Schools. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Carpenter?
Okay, as mentioned by Commissioner Price, EDC Economic Development Commission has a lot of activity going on, and I guess our addition to Owens Corning over there in our tech park is one of the largest facilities we had. And since they chose to locate here, they're expanding and adding a lot of corporate offices, some research and development. It's going to be very significant for here in the county. Also, the firm that's purchased part of the property in Southwood, Vestmar City, they're on a fast track to get their operation going there. I guess they finalized getting the rail situation worked out, or it's still kind of iffy there, but hopefully that'll be worked out and we can locate them here. And I also was impressed with the efforts that we had in getting a lease with the hospital. I think it's going to be good for citizens of Gaston County. I support it, and I look forward to continued good relations with the hospital as they provide services. Thank you.
Commissioner Keiger?
Oh, man, okay, TP, roll out.
I want to thank Adam and Mary Jane for coming on out tonight. Glad you didn't have any controversy with your vote. Just so the public knows, we are trying to make voting a little more efficient, and hopefully, it's always accurate. And I would like to mention that I did meet with the Library Board earlier, or late last week, I believe, and there was a good discussion on the possibility of getting our libraries opened up again, the ones that are, the satellites that are closed several days a week. So that may be coming towards us. The College Board met yesterday evening, and just if you want to jot these notes down, but you'll get emails, the Farr Trade and Industrial Building, we're going to have the open house and dedication Monday, April 20 at 10:00 a.m. And if you would, keep on your calendars, the 50th anniversary of Gaston College, it will be a black tie event Saturday, May 16, at the Gaston Country Club. And that very well may sell out, so if you get the opportunity, it might be better to... Okay, and you should have received, or if you haven't, Donna will get you an invitation to the new Endo Center, which is short for Endoscopy, over on Cox Road. They're going to have a nice little gala, April 30. But Donna, we'll get that out to you, and we'd appreciate a RSVP. That's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you. It's Keiger.
Oh, sorry about that.
E, not I.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Price?
Thank you. Would like for Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Keiger to bring something forward sometime this year, recognizing Tony's Ice Cream. That was article in a paper about 100 years old. Since they represent the Gaston Township, just, you know...
On lactose intolerance.
Serve us all ice cream and have something here, you know, I think, I mean, 100 years in business, something to be proud of, I mean...
I agree.
Even it is ice cream, but y'all get...
I will contact the family.
Okay, if you could handle that, Commissioner Keiger?
I can do it.
We would like samples.
Samples. Fried bologna sandwiches for dinner that night and samples.
Commissioner Keiger, did you say with the Endoscopy Center, you said we would prefer an RSVP? Are you helping, heading that up, or...
I guess I'm the conduit. I didn't mean we, they would like one. We, I meant Donna and I, I think, when I said it.
Endoscopy is the conduit.
But they do want to have a head count because it is going to be fairly...
So the we was your...
Yeah, I guess.
Thank you, Commissioner Keiger. Okay, I have two items. One, I would like to get some direction on. I just want to kind of read this, just give you a little heads up and see if you will oblige. Today's broadband access for both citizens and business is a critical piece of infrastructure for any community. To compete for business and provide the type of service attractive to people moving into the area, widespread access to broadband and increasingly important fiber to the home or business availability is critical. Gaston County has been a beneficiary of significant investment by many of our carriers, including AT&amp;T, Time Warner, and Charter Communication. Our level of service from these companies, in many cases, is superior to services available in other surrounding counties. Because of the increasing importance of this infrastructure, we need to take a comprehensive look at the current state of broadband service in the county, and what actions could help us ensure that we are on the leading edge of future service options. What I would like to do, if it would please the board, is I would like for you to give me the authority to put together a task force. This would not be a standing committee up under the board, it would be an advisory committee to go out and find out how much of the county is served by broadband access, what grants are available to extend broadband to underserved, unserved or underserved areas, to look for gaps in the availability from existing providers that could be filled, to look at what speed of service are available to county residents, and how does the cost compare? and how does the cost compare to other similar markets? Are there opportunities to extend free Wi-Fi to a broad range of areas such as the city of Gastonia's done in downtown area? And also, what type of futures, and this is really the main driver here, what type of future service can we recruit or encourage, specifically Google Fiber, which are AT&amp;T gigabyte service? And what would it take to recruit them? And what's pushing this is I was approached by a businessman that was a little concerned, you know, with Charlotte getting Google Fiber. I don't know if many of you know, but from my understanding, Huntersville and Gastonia was on the list and then somehow bumped. And instead of just taking no for an answer, getting someone from Time Warner Cable, Charter Communications, and AT&amp;T, along with some folks from the Greater Gaston Development Corporation, to just head up a committee to look at these things and actually go after it and see what we can do. And I was wondering if y'all would give me that privilege. I have talked to Chuck and it is perfectly okay to do.
I would support that.
Okay.
I think it's a great move and that's the future.
Okay. Does anyone have any objection? Okay, what I will do is I will get some folks together and I will report back to the board. Let me see here. Okay. I also have one other issue I'd like to go over with you. We have discussed several times, I think Commissioner Kager had brought the idea up of maybe the board appointing each member, having two appointments to the Commissioner's School of Excellence. Have talked to Mr. Booker and he has, I think, a pretty good idea on what it would take to do that. Currently, each school has an allotment of 14. Currently, each school, 14, is allotted, one freshman for every 50 enrolled freshmen. Without increasing the allotment, which is currently 60 students, and maintaining the current criteria for all 2016 admitted participating students, he recommends that 46 students would be selected based off of the recommendations from each of the high schools. And the remaining 14 could be selected by each commissioner, choosing two students who meet the qualifying criteria outlined in the application process from schools within the township they serve. I know we have talked about that. I just want to make sure that that is something y'all are good with. Also, the Commissioner's School of Excellence, let me see here, Process Resolution states, "Admission to the School of Excellence shall be open to all ninth grade students in the public and private Gaston County high schools and based on outstanding class performance, leadership potential, and facility evaluations. Regardless of race, creed, color, gender, and national origin, should not play a part selection in the School of Excellence." Those, in the current guidelines, says you have to be a student, or excuse me, a resident of Gaston County as well. I would just like to add homeschool into that because if you're a parent, well, if you live in Gaston County, you pay property taxes that go towards education regardless if it's a private school, homeschool, or public school. So, basically what would happen is the number of students wouldn't change. We would get 14 of the 60, each commissioner would get two, and we could choose between public, private, or homeschool. And if that's okay, I will work together a resolution on getting that together. Just wanted to get some type of direction on that. If everyone's okay or if you have any questions? This year's basically already said it would be next year.
I don't have a problem.
Okay. Commissioner Kager, is that...
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm happy about it.
Okay.
Can't you see me?
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we will go to the county manager's report. Mr. Mathers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of items this evening. I did want to mention that the budget is certainly taking shape. I want to thank everyone for their participation at our annual budget retreat, which I think was a smashing success. Really learned a lot and indeed, we're learning a lot through the priority-based budgeting process in general. So, we are taking the suggestions of the board and implementing those and will, of course, be turning out a budget recommendation before too long. So, we're concentrating very fully on that right now and I think preliminary indications are encouraging in terms of where we're going to come out this year. Still awaiting a counteroffer on the proposed animal control facility, which should be coming any day, I hope. And then finally, several months back, we had talked about putting together a Gaston County magazine. And that process has been underway since that time. We're a little bit behind schedule, but I do believe that we'll have something in draft form within the next two to three weeks and looking for a publication date probably four to six weeks out. That's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Earl. Chuck? County Attorney's report?
No report, Mr. Chairman, tonight. But if you'd like to fill in for a few minutes while we're waiting for the planning board to come back.
Okay. I'd like to congratulate UofC University on their sweet 16 arrival.
How about NC?
And I was hoping UNC would've lost to Harvard. Did I just say that? So, what we'll do, we are waiting on the planning board. We'll take a recess until they come back in. We're recessed.[1000.56]
Come back in.[832.73]